All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. The date is Tuesday, July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is the regular time and place for a meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. We continue to deal with issues surrounding COVID- nineteen. So the board is using the WebEx format this morning. So whether you're joining us by way of the World Wide Web or by the teleconferencing part of the format, we thank you for participating. If you'd like to comment under Unscheduled, please use the Raise Your Hand feature if you are on the web, or try to get somebody's attention if you are on teleconferencing. Members that are present here in the audience, we request you to fill out speakers cards, and the clerk will call you up when, in the order that she receives them. And we thank you for participating in that as well. Each vote today will be verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After the motion and the second and discussion, there will be a rule called Vote by District. With that, thank you very much, everyone. And now to establish quorum, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fugundes is absent.
We have four members present, one absent. Thank you very much. Now, if we can ask everyone to please rise as we invite Pastor Wilbert Keel of the Bright Light Community Church to deliver the invocation this morning. Either place. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning. Let us bow our heads. Eternal God, we thank you for allowing us to come together in this place. We thank you for another day. And we pray now for every person that's in this room, for every person that's listening on social media, for every person that has an interest in our county, Kings County. We pray now for Kings County. God, that you will look on us and protect us. And we pray now for this board of supervisors. Give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding on how to lead our county into greater greatness that we have never seen before. We ask now for your divine help, your divine guidance, and your divine strength. We pray now for each individual, and not only the individuals that are here, but for all of their families, and for every family that they're in touch with. We pray your divine help. Now, God, again, we ask for your divine wisdom in this meeting, that we will make right decisions. We pray now in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Keel. Now, if you'll join me, as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Unscheduled Appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this board. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. Does the clerk have a record of anyone that would like to address the board at this time?
I do not have any written correspondence, but the first speaker is Unchong Perry.
Morning, Unchong. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Unchong Perry, Deputy Director from Kings County Bureau of Health. This morning, the department is here to share exciting news of a launch of a national hotline. As of July sixteen, nine, the new three-digit number nine eight is a number to connect people experiencing a mental health crisis to existing national suicide prevention lifeline that used to be one eight hundred number. Modeling after nine-one-one, this nine-eight-eight is designed to be a memorable and quick number that people can connect when they're in suicidal or experiencing a mental health crisis to a trained mental health professional anywhere in the United States. To promote this national hotline, nine-eight-eight number, the department has launched a iHeartRadio campaign advertisement, both in English and Spanish. And we are also currently working on a ads to promote, to put on car buses and bus stations throughout the Kings County, which is shown here, which was designed by the staff, our outreach coordinator. At a recent press briefing, the Secretary of the Federal Department of Health and Human Services stated that if you are willing to turn to someone in your moment of crisis, nine-eight-eight will be there. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Bill Lynch.
Morning, Chief. Thanks for being here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just want to give you an update on your fire department. As you know, we previously were operating at the Washburn incident in Yosemite. We had six personnel and two units up there. Those units have returned, but consequently, last night, they were dispatched to the Agua Fire, which is in MMU, which is in Mariposa County. Again, we have six personnel up there, two units operating. We still have one battalion chief operating in the management overhead at the Yosemite Fire, and those are nine was called up last night to do standard cover in Kalinka. So we're busy. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Matta Clark, do you have a record of anyone else?
That is all the speaker cards that I have, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Very good. Last call. Anybody in chambers? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the next item, which is a reporting out of the closed session that took place on July twelfth. Diane, do you have a report?
I do. In closed session on July twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the board acted to appoint Carolyn Leest as Human Resources Director effective July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. By a three-two vote, with Supervisors Verboon, Peterson, and Valley voting in favor and Supervisors Nevs and Fugundes voting against, Ms. Leest's compensation will be considered and set as part of the regular agenda in open session today.
Very good. Thank you. The next item is approval of the minutes from that July twelfth meeting. Have board members had an opportunity to review the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Moved by Verboon.
Seconded, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Valley. Thank you very much. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
We have four members in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. The next item is the consent calendar, and there are multiple items on the consent calendar this morning. Have board members had an opportunity to review the consent calendar of the day?
If there are no questions or comments, I'll move the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Peterson. Additional questions, comments, or concerns on the consent calendar? Hearing or seeing no one come forward, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
But the record show four members in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. Moving to regular agenda items, first item comes from the Department of Finance regarding a PERS contribution. And Jim, welcome back. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning. Jim Herb, Director of Finance. This is an item that we started last year. It's pre-funding the pension, the unfunded pension liability. That's the only piece of the pension that CalPERS allows us to pre-fund. By pre-funding it, we get, we can invest it at a better rate, and so we got an arbitrage of about ninety thousand this year. Last year, we got an arbitrage of about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. And what this represents is the change in interest rates that we're seeing, and it's changing fast. Our quarter ending, let's see, March thirty-first, our interest, our return was about point-six percent, and it's, and right now Treasury bills are going for about three percent. So we don't jump into that three percent right away. We have a ladder, and as our investments mature, we'll buy new ones, and so we'll start climbing up, but we'll see a pretty significant return on our, on our investment. So we haven't seen it in quite a while. Once we get that, we probably won't be pre-funding the pension. It won't be as low. Like I said, this year, ninety thousand, last year, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. So, but it's still worth doing this year, and that's what this item is in front of you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Herb. Questions, comments, concerns?
There's no question or comments. I'll move as presented. Thank you, Jim.
Moved by Verboon.
Seconded, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Valley. Additional questions, comments, or concerns?
There are one. I mean, clearly, the stock market's not performing as it was. How is CalPERS returns?
Yeah, I haven't looked lately. It's, CalPERS, the frustrating thing with CalPERS is we don't really have any control over it, but to watch it. And so I haven't seen what the returns are. The stock market has been going down over probably the last six months, and I'm sure that there's kind of a lag in, in their returns if we're going to see a decline, but it won't surprise me if we don't hit the expected interest returns or discount returns of six and a half percent. But that's how pension works. You know, one year we'll get seventeen percent, and then one year we'll get a negative three percent. And so the actuaries, when they determine that six and a half percent or what our return's supposed to be, they're looking out thirty to forty years and trying to come up with an average. So it's, it's hard to look at it day to day.
A good thing they went away from oil, right?
I, I don't, I think they, yeah, I think they are being limited on the types of investments they can do.
It's down. See, I checked about three weeks ago, at least online anyways, mine was down. And it was, it was down more than our deferred comp stock market account to, at least online.
Yeah. Yep. It'll go up and down, but deferred comp's certainly a, a good thing to have somebody into. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Additional questions or comments? The item has been moved by Verboon, seconded by Valley. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Let the record show, four members in, in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. The next item comes from the Health Department regarding appointments to the Kings County Ambulance Commission. Good morning.
Morning, Chairman. Supervisors Rosemary Rand, Department of Public Health. The item before you today is the appointment and reappointment of seven individuals to the Kings County Ambulance Commission. The Kings County Ambulance Commission was created on November first, nineteen ninety-five, when an exclusive operating area was created for emergency ambulance service and advanced life support ambulance service. The duties of the commission are advisory and involve oversight of the current provider, assessing liquidated damages and making recommendations on matters of performance and the terms and conditions of the agreement to the local EMS agency, the Public Health Department, and you, the Board of Supervisors. Commission is made up of representatives from each of the four participating cities, Avenel, Corcoran, Hanford, and Lemoore, two representatives from the county, one from the hospital, and a representative from Kings County Medical Society. The representatives are nominated by, by the member organization and appointed to a two-year term by your board. The following are recommended for appointment and reappointment. David Tapia, City of Avenel, Stephen Pendergrass, and Tom McKean, City of Hanford, David Dodd, and Chris Barstino, Kings County, and John McGowan and Liesl Sprague from the local hospital. We recommend the reappointment of six members and one new appointment for a two-year term.
Good. Thank you, Rosemary. Questions, comments, or concerns about the appointees?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Chair. How often do they meet?
Um, you know, usually they meet quarterly. It depends on the needs. I think we skipped the last meeting, but they meet pretty regularly. I'm on it. There's several members on the commission that meet, and EMS.
Who, who runs the meeting?
Usually, it's the local EMS authority, Daniel Lynch.
Oh, got it. And you guys sit down with American Ambulance?
Yes, and they're on, for this. They're and go over any of their performance. They do their performance records, any complaints. They go through everything with them.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have no, I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Chairman, to reappoint.
I'll second. Moved by Valley, seconded by Verboon to make the appointments as presented. Are there additional questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Let the record show, the appointment stand approved, four in favor with one absent. Thank you very much. The next item is under the administration heading, with the first item coming from Kimways Management regarding a report from Bob Henry. And I see Bob Henry on, online, virtual attendant the meeting virtually?
Is he muted, Bob Henry?
Good morning.
There he is.
Morning. There you go.
Great. Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, and board members. Past activities I'm going to be covering from April twenty-sixth through July eighteenth. Have a few items this morning. May sixteenth, Kings County Environmental Health Services was at the Kettelman Hills facility. This was for their monthly unannounced inspection of MSW landfill B seventeen, hazardous waste landfill B eighteen, and the MSW landfill B nineteen, which is currently under a delay of closure. During their inspection, there were no area of concerns, and there were no violations noted. On May twenty-fourth, we had the San Maken Valley Air Pollution Control District at KHF. This was for the annual source test for the MSW flare. During that test, there were no exceedances that were recorded. That went well. June ninth, Kings County Environmental Health Services back out at KHF for their monthly unannounced inspection. No areas of concern and no violations noted. June fifteenth, we had the California Department of Toxic Substances Control at KHF. This was an unannounced focused facility inspection. The inspection included three DTSC inspectors for a one-day inspection. Focus area was limit to, limited to the bulk storage unit phases one and two. The inspectors reviewed records of land disposal restriction waste. The bulk storage units, so if you have a rickor hazardous waste, we'll have to treat it before it goes in the landfill. We'll treat it. We'll put it on the bulk storage units. We'll take samples. We'll have those samples analyzed, provided the material passes, then we'll take the waste to the landfill. And that's what they were checking. During their inspection, there were no issues and no violations noted. July fifth, Kings County Environmental Health Services back out for their monthly unannounced inspection. No areas of concern, no violations noted. July thirteenth, we had a small fire on our drum storage unit. We had a super sack that was filled with oily rags spontaneously combusted. We were very fortunate, the operator, it happened while we were here, the operator smelled the super sack smoldering and moved it to a secure location where the sack was extinguished with both dry chemical and water, and then we repacked it. No one was injured and no property damage occurred. Future activities, DTSC has requested a site visit in September. The site visit would be for the DTSC executive staff. Total of eleven staff members will be attending. Most of them will be attorneys for the DTSC. They're going to be taking a tour of our facility prior to doing the permit renewal. They will also be doing one at the Buttonwillow Facility in Kern County. And then also last on future activities, DTSC Part B renewal, DTSC and KHF to discuss changes to the site-specific ambient air monitoring plan on July twenty-second, and then changes to the waste analysis plan on July twenty-eighth. DTSC is hoping to wrap up their technical review by September and then have a draft permit decision by early twenty-twenty-three, and then they will be holding the permit renewal public hearing sometime after they have their draft permit decision. That's all I have for you today.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Questions, comments? Supervisor Peterson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Bob, I caught an article today about piles of used solar panels showing up, just dumped out in the countryside, not necessarily here in Kings County, but what level facility is, is gonna be responsible for holding that type of waste?
Again, if you have solar panels, until which time you determine to be a waste, they're, they're not a waste. So right now, the process to dispose of solar panels is microencapsulation due to the lead that they have inside those, inside the panels. The problem occurred, we were so busy as a, as a society to get the solar panels put out that we didn't take into account the recycling of those early on. Those are put together in a wafer format, sort of like plywood, and it's really difficult to take them apart. I have heard that there's one company down in San Diego that is, is actually recycling, but it's extremely expensive. So most are going for microencapsulation and then disposal in a haz landfill. I've done a lot of, of projects so far this year where we've had to do that. One down in the Bakersfield area that I, I'll briefly touch on, fire went through a commercial solar panel area, and so then those panels all needed to be disposed of, so we had to, we took care of those for them. It, it's gonna be tough when all these panels start hitting their twenty years, and we have, there's not a lot of locations to get rid of them. Hopefully, they'll be coming up with recycling technology that'll allow them to take those, you know, take those layers apart. But right now, it's, it's very difficult.
Could you define microencapsulation?
Okay. At our treatment unit, the one I was just mentioning about the land disposal restriction waste, our treatment unit that we have on site, we do stabilization. That's where you chemically fixate. Number one thing we do is lead impacted soil. So we'll chemically fixate by adding cement and other things to the waste to keep that lead from leaching out once we take it to the landfill. We'll do solidification, which is taking a liquid and turning it into a solid, usually via fly ash-type material. Then we'll do what's called, and those were what we did early on in the, in the late eighties, early nineties. And then in the late nineties, we had new regulations hit, and we had to take care of rickor contaminated debris, Resource Conservation and Recovery Act debris. So the state came out, or the feds came out and said, what do you call a debris? A debris is anything greater than sixty millimeters in particle size, which is like a tennis ball, and you have to have greater than fifty-one, fifty percent in the waste stream. So greater than a tennis ball in size and greater than fifty percent. So that's a debris. So now we either have to ma, microencapsulate it or macroencapsulate it. Macroencapsulation is where we will take the material and put it in a twenty cubic yard roll-off container that has been lined with what we call a macro secure vault. Macro secure vault is a half-inch thick layer of HDPE that's spun mold, and it fits to the roll-off container. We'll put the rickor contaminated debris inside the roll-off container, and then we'll put a layer of hundred-mill HDPE on the top, and then we'll glue it down and then screw it down, and we'll take that roll off with the vault inside to the landfill and slide it out. So that's your greater-than-sixty-millimeters in particle size and variety of type materials. A lot of what we'll see is like laboratory duck work, things like that. Microencapsulation, I got to your point eventually. So microencapsulation, it's where we're geomet, it has to be of a geometric shape where we can coat the exterior of the material. Typically, we'll use cement to coat the exterior of the material before we take it into the landfill. So you'll go back and you go, well, you have stabilization where you're reducing the impact to the landfill by chemically fixating this lead that's in that soil. You're coming over here to the debris instead of just putting it in the landfill. You're either macroencapsulating it by putting in the macro secure vault, or you're microencapsulating it where you're putting cement around it so that if we have precipitation, that you're reducing the toxicity of the sump. So, so microencapsulation is where we coat it with cement before we put it into the hazardous waste landfill.
Thank you for that. I just, you know, you, everybody's in a rush to get, get all this solar out, and you look at the thousands of acres in Kings County and the bonding methods that we're using, and I hope they're, they're expansive enough to support people walking away from, you know, those projects. And, but also, you know, we've talked about how, how we look at, you know, new facilities coming in that are exporting energy to the larger metropolitan areas and, and, you know, at the cost of agricultural lands in Kings County. And so I think, you know, I, I hope that at some point, we circle back and look at, Mr. Chairman, you know, the impacts to Kings County and how we position ourselves to sustain and deal with those issues when they come back to the county. And again, it'll be beyond my time probably, because, you know, a lot of this technology is, is not that old yet, but it's, it's gonna happen. And so, Bob, thank you for the information, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments from Mr. Henry?
No comments, I'll move to accept his report.
Second.
Second. Verboon, seconded by Valley. Thank you very much. Additional questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Let the record show, the report was accepted by four members with one absent. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
The next item from administration deals with Human Resources Director Compensation. Mr. Hill, would you like to introduce the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, County Administrative Officer. As reported out today, your board appointed Carolyn Leest as the Human Resources Director. Mrs. Leest has a master's degree in public administration and began her career with the county as a personnel technician in Human Resources Department in two thousand and three and has been a county employee for nineteen years. I would like to point out that the agenda item has an incorrect start year of two thousand and eight. Her correct year is two thousand and three. Over those years, she has promoted through the department up to the role of Principal Personal Analyst. Today, we are recommending your board set her salary at twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-six per month, including management benefits, effective July twenty-fifth. The salary and benefits are included in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three recommended budget. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Questions, comments, or concerns?
No questions or comments. Move for adoption.
I'll second, but I don't know if she, she may have to give a speech today, and also, there's a group in the back, either in protest or in support.
Yeah.
I want to thank the board and Ed from the bottom of my heart for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I also want to thank my staff, who's been amazingly supportive throughout this few last months, and my family and friends, and I'm truly humbled by all the support and the reach outs I've had from people who've heard, and so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't mess up.
Very good. The item's been moved by Peterson, seconded by Verboon. Additional questions or comments?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman. Just, I think it's always a, I hope it's a positive signal every time, anytime the board could get to a point to appoint someone from within the ranks. And I know the board, I know we appreciate the loyalty, we appreciate the hard work of all Kings County employees, and we do think about the morale and welfare of, of the workers when decisions are made like that, to see someone who's worked so hard over the years to have that opportunity to, to lead. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Let the record show, that item stands approved, four in favor with one absent. Thank you very much. The third item coming from administration is to, discussion regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funding with the Small Business Assistance Program. And Mr. Hill, you want to kick off the discussion on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item is another. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item is another ARPA agenda for consideration. The state and local coronavirus fiscal recovery funds legislation, part of the American Rescue Plan Act, was signed into law by President Biden on March eleventh, twenty twenty one. The county has received a total of twenty nine million, seven hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and two dollars allocation directly from the US Treasury. As of today, the funds sit in a separate fund, so they do not fall into the general fund balance. Last week, your board acted and allocated two point four million to various community and business related projects. Your board also requested that we return today on recommendation by county council to consider allocating an additional six million dollars of ARPA funds to enhance the job training offices Small Business Assistance Program. If your board approves the proposed recommenda- excuse me, recommendation, the remaining balance of ARPA funds will be five million, six hundred and seventy eight thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. As a reminder, ARPA funds must be obligated by December thirty first, twenty twenty four and completely expended by December thirty first, twenty twenty six. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Lippincott is also in the audience if you have any questions for him as well.
Good, thank you, Mr. Hill. Uh, Lance, anything you want to say before we?
Yes. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would just point out that as approved right now for the five hundred thousand dollar program, it is only unincorporated. It's fifty employees or less. Nonprofits are not eligible for it, and it's a twenty five thousand dollar award. Uh, we did request, as discussed last week, the direction on increasing the employee rating if additional funding was allocated to a hundred FTEs per employer. And, uh, extend that from an unincorporated, as was previously directed, to, uh, all areas of the county, if you so desire.
Very good. Thank you, Lance. Uh, questions for Mr. Hill or Mr. Lippincott?
No, so I brought this out, been talking about it for some time. We did this in two thousand and, uh, twenty with the first part of the CARES Act, I believe, or, or, uh, COVID money. And it was, uh, very well warranted for the community. I mean, the people that got it were, they didn't want to brag about it, but they were in tears when they received the funds because they were shut down for so long and they couldn't get their business built back up. I think it's still, this is still needed at this time. Some of the businesses are not in business anymore. They couldn't make it. Uh, but you know, if you, if you think about what we do here, we sit on all these boards. I probably sit on about twelve committees. Not one supports the business owners in our community. And I think we need to support the business owners at, at this time. I think COVID did them, uh, did them wrong. Uh, there are some businesses out there that still are struggling, uh, whether it's on their own or the fact that they just can't get back up on top because they're still struggling with their rent, their power bills, all kinds of expenses. Food prices have gone, uh, to the roof, oil prices gone to the roof. I do think it's important, this is a lot of money, uh, to give to the community. But we also need to put an end date on it. So if they don't respond within a certain amount of time, we put the money back in the pot, we start over, put it somewhere else, we don't waste it. Uh, I think, I mean Lance talked about this, I think he, he can probably ready to roll out by September first. And, uh, I'd like to see it closed before February first or January first, whatever, probably February first. Uh, that way no one has to bust their butt, you know, during the holidays. Last time we shut it down on December thirty first. And it was extremely hard for people that realized that, oh my God, this is for me. And, you know, they made our staff work during the holidays to get their, the rollout done by December thirty first. So if we can extend it from September first to February first or January thirty first, that'd be good if that worked for you.
Absolutely.
I know that, uh, Super Peterson had some concerns about, you know, we need to save this for a rainy day. Uh, we have a lot of uncertainties coming. If we don't roll out the six million, we only spent half bit to businesses that need it. Uh, we can put it back in a pot and use it for something else in a, in our, on a rainy day.
Can I just clarify the September, um, the, the dates you've just mentioned are twenty twenty two or did you intend them to be twenty twenty three?
Twenty twenty three, yes.
Twenty twenty three, okay.
September first, twenty twenty two to end date February first, twenty twenty three.
Okay.
And the only reason for the extra month is to, uh, if someone doesn't get it done, they'd realize that on December twenty third, because they're at their family's house for Christmas, and they say, well, did you apply for the grant? And they're calling us and we have to work, the staff have to work. I don't think that's fair to our staff. And we're doing the businesses a favor and, uh, they need to figure it out for themselves at this point. Someone's gonna give you twenty thousand dollars, you need to be on top of it. So I think Lance can roll it out and, uh, we'll give them an opportunity to, to apply for it. And I think we'd be very careful not to give it to the wrong people too.
Yes, sir.
So that said, I'll make a motion to approve the six million dollars at this time. Is there no more questions or comments?
Twenty five K to.
Is it twenty five or twenty?
Uh, twenty five thousand was the approval.
Twenty five, okay, very good.
Yeah, I, I mean, rather than just vote no, I'll just, you know, explain myself. And again, I, I just think, um, you know, there's a boomerang effect coming. Um, uh, I think everyone in the financial world expects a recession. And I think we have until, uh, well, I know we have until December twenty twenty four to allocate, uh, and twenty six to spend that money. Um, you know, things aren't the greatest right now, but they're not as bad as, as I think they're gonna go. Um, you start looking at interest rates, uh, the first indicators, uh, lumber prices are starting to fall because of, uh, the lack of demand, uh, housing. Um, you know, that bubble is, is probably gonna burst because, uh, you know, for every percentage point that, uh, that moves up, it takes more and more people out of the, uh, the, uh, housing market and, uh, back into, um, you know, identity housing. And, uh, I just think that, that the worst is yet to come. And, and, uh, without, uh, you know, a real demand on this money until twenty twenty four, um, I think I, I just would be in opposition to this, so.
If I can counter that, you know, uh, if we don't give, give all the money about out in a short amount of time, then it goes back in the pot and we can use it for whatever we need to in the future. So it gives an opportunity. Uh, if the businesses are in dire need of it, they can't apply, it will filter through it and then give the one that need it. And then the ones that don't, we'll take the money back. And I, my motion stamps.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I like to, uh, strongly, uh, second, uh, Super Boon's motion. Um, I put out, uh, some of my reasons why last week, I don't want to take up too much of the board's time. But, but I agree that, uh, you know, these are American Rescue, uh, Plan Act funds. And, and I think there is, uh, the timings there to, uh, have to help, uh, rescue some of these small businesses. Um, I got a lot of confidence in Lance and his staff, um, to get the money out. Or, or if not, like, uh, Super Boon said, then, then it can come back. Um, uh, we learned a lot two years ago. We learned that, uh, the first rollout was five million. And we learned that it was hard to get that money out there. People, uh, businesses didn't know, you know, from here to Kettleman to Avenue to, uh, Hanford, Lamar. It, it took a long time. And in fact, I know a lot of time and resources, uh, the weekends at Lance and his staff worked, uh, overtime. A lot of that time is spent getting the word out and then going door to door in these rural communities. Um, uh, and, and getting Spanish language, um, uh, applications printed to, uh, to go and, uh, help roll this out. That was timely, it was a lot of work. And so, um, that, that, uh, based on that positive experience, along with the need, um, I, 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 I plan to support this today. Um, I do, I do have a question on, um, when we went, uh, with the five hundred thousand, uh, rollout a couple of weeks ago, um, this time, I know that we put in fifteen thousand, uh, for, uh, administration fee. And, um, I, I was glad to see that this time, Mr. Lippincott, because again, uh, two years ago, that's six million. You and your staff, you guys did that and, and you covered it in the overhead. And, um, you really stretched, uh, your budget to make it work at a time that was needed. But this time, I think that's asking a lot of you. So can I ask you, uh, off the five hundred thousand, um, and you projected fifteen thousand would take care of the admin fee. Now this gets bumped up today, if it passes a six million, um, can you, can you give us a number that, that you think would, uh, uh, help with the admin fee? And, and I think we can, um, even keep it built in, the six million without going above the six million. But I'd, I'd like to hear from you on that and be honest with us. Don't be, uh, so conservative like you were two years ago.
So I'm, I'm actually really proud of staff. Two years ago, this was a great exercise for us to leverage our current state and federal regulations so we could roll all the money out. However, we're now getting stretched on leverage because of the amount of grant activities that we're involved in. Um, I will say the program we just ran, the hundred ninety two thousand, there was thirty two thousand that was set aside for administrative fees of that hundred ninety two thousand, which I thought was excessive. We only ended up taking about twenty five hundred of that grant. However, for this one, because you're talking about a, a greater pool and everything else, and even though most of the work is front loaded, setting up the logistics and everything else, um, if we could get maybe twenty five thousand in admin, we'll match it with our state and federal allocations so that we can leverage that across. And then we'll, we'll make sure all costs wash through that, so it's not as big of a burden on the county and lets us roll out more funding to the businesses. It would be, um, that'd probably be about the, the, that probably about the best way we could handle it, using our leverage funding and everything else like that and keeping the cost relatively low.
Okay, I'm surprised that small increase from fifteen to twenty five, from fifteen thousand for five hundred thousand, twenty five thousand for six million.
The hard part is with these grants, honestly, we've been learning is the setup. Uh, I mean, it is, it, they do take quite a bit of setup, and this one, we're doing a little bit different. We're actually gonna provide drafts of the application out to some of the supervisors, some of the city council. We want to hear people that don't file grants tell us how hard is this application before we roll it out to the public. Last time, I thought it was a simple application, but again, that's what we do. We are a grant funded department. We file grants nonstop. So the hope is that if we can do a little more work on the front end, make it easier for folks on the back end. It's also easier on our administrative processes and processing. So that's kind of where the thought is on the, on the, the extra ten thousand. That being said, we'll leverage probably about the same amount in staff funding from our WEO allocations to help serve the grant as well.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I know that, um, last time you did a good job of updating us two weeks in, three weeks in. Hey, people aren't applying in your areas, work with, uh, community leaders, uh, around our districts to help get the word out. Um, so I, I look forward to that again, if, if you don't mind doing that as well. Um, lastly, uh, Super Ben, would you be willing to, uh, uh, mod- or incorporate in your motion the, uh, twenty five K admin fee for Lance and his staff this time?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Thank you, thanks. So then with that, so I'd probably second that motion.
Very good. Um, any other discussion? With all, uh, discussions ceased, uh, the item has been moved by Verboon, seconded by Valley. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Oh. Let the record show, three in favor, one no, one absent. Thank you very much. Good luck, Lance.
Can we try that again, but this time let's put peer pressure on Craig?
Well, Craig has a replacement in the audience.
Would you like to say a couple of words?
That concludes the action items of the morning. We will now move to a study session regarding the Kings County Association of Governments. And I see Domingo has joined us, so, uh, would you like to kick off the discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Domingo Cruz, one of your administrative analysts in the administrative office. So this morning, uh, I'm requesting that your board receive information and update from the Kings County Association of Governments and propose investment options for the regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategy. So the last update to your board was on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. So I will now turn it over to Ms. Terry Kings. She's the Executive Director of Kings County Association of Governments to go over the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Domingo. Terry King, thank you for joining us this morning. Appreciate you seeing you.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about our regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategies. Uh, this is a document that we're required to prepare every four years. What the regional transportation plan is, is a long range planning document for transportation, covering all modes. It includes a policy element for all of the different modes we talk about. It provides a, an action element, which is the list of projects that would be funded by all the jurisdictions over a twenty year period, and then a financial element, which provides the funding to implement those projects. And it is a financially constrained project, meaning we have to identify the amount of funding that is available over twenty year period and identify those projects that would, uh, utilize that funding. The fourth element is the sustainable community strategies. And what this is, is a document or a chapter in the regional transportation plan that identifies the plans, programs and projects that if implemented would, uh, help us meet our greenhouse gas emission reduction targets that are set by the Air Resources Board. And this is only for passenger vehicles and light duty pickup trucks, not for anything else. Um, and we have worked with our local agencies to identify those projects. We have released these documents for public review and comment period. They were released on July seventh for fifty five days. Uh, we also released the environmental impact report for forty five day comment period last Friday, as well as the air quality, uh, conformity analysis for these documents and the Federal Transportation Improvement Program, which is a list of federally approved projects uh, covering all different modes. So, um, with that, I would like to introduce Kendall Flint. Uh, she is our outreach manager for this effort, and she'll talk about the process for how we went about, um, developing the sustainable community strategies and identifying the scenarios that we're developing as part of this plan to identify the suite of projects and plans and programs for the emission reduction projects. And to, to also talk about the workshops that are, uh, coming up this week. And we have met with, uh, tonight we'll conclude, it's a busy day today. Uh, we have met with the City of Avenue, the City of Corcoran, our supervisors. Tonight, we go to, uh, City of Hanford and City of Lamar, and then a workshop in Avenue and then a workshop in Hanford tomorrow, and then a virtual workshop on Thursday. So with that, I will introduce, uh, Kendall.
Thanks so much, Terry. Nice to see everybody. I wish I was there in person, but I'm happy to be here virtually. Um, Josie, can you please share your screen? I know you did that earlier and it worked, so I'm curious. Ah, here we go. Okay, so as Terry said, this is a process that happens every four years. And basically, um, what we're gonna be doing is kind of talking about the process, what the requirements are, and in general, what's been happening. So if you go to the next slide, Josie, I just kind of want to go over some of the basics. And I think, gentlemen, you, you've kind of heard this before. So if you go to the next slide, Josie. So as Terry mentioned, um, KCAG is a metropolitan planning organization, and that is a federally required, um, agency that basically distributes funds that flow through from the federal legislature. It is, uh, members are all four cities as well as the county. And our, um, KCAG is one of eighteen, uh, metropolitan planning organizations, um, in California and three hundred and eighty one world, uh, state, sorry, nationwide. If you go to the next slide for me, please. So basically, the plan takes all of the investments that are planned by the member agencies and puts them all under one umbrella. One of them is the regional transportation plan, which very specifically identifies the investments that are gonna be taking place over the next twenty five years. That's things like new interchanges, if you're gonna be adding, um, transportation options like buses. If you're gonna be increasing broadband, all those things go into the package. It looks at things that are regionally beneficial, so how we're gonna move goods and services, agriculture from, uh, within the county to other folks. And then the sustainable community strategy actually links land use decisions to these transportation investments. So that means the project team has been meeting with the planning departments and community development at all of the member agencies, as well as the county, to find out what's been planned. And then looking at all that stuff over the next twenty five years, we're trying to hit targets to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and also improve connectivity and safety throughout the county. Next slide, please. So the plan really is not KCAG's plan as much as it is the agency's plan, all the various jurisdictions. So it basically takes a look and has a shared vision of what everybody wants to see happening. As Terry mentioned, it has to be fiscally sound or fiscally constrained, which means we can only, um, include investments that we know we can pay for either through, um, sales tax or through, um, general fund or wherever you have allocations in your capital improvement plans. Um, I, I'm always, um, reluctant, but I'd be remiss to say Kings is not a self-help county, which means you don't benefit from some of the other funding that you can get from the state. Um, but you do have funding coming in from SB one, which passed in twenty sixteen, I think it was, twenty seventeen. So you are seeing new revenue streams. And really what the idea here is to look at system preservation as opposed to new things. In other words, taking care of the roads that we have and making sure that they are continuing to be functional and safe. And of course, it has, I mentioned, the, the prioritization of projects, and then of course, it has to meet all state and federal guidelines. Hence, the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, review process. Next slide, please. So how do you develop the scenarios? Well, basically, we're looking at a path to reach these greenhouse gas targets. and other targets that are required by the state and federal government. If you go to the next slide, you'll see we've actually identified four scenarios that we're going to be, um, including in this particular document, which by the way, is available for public review. And you can find that at the KCAG website or at kingsregionalvision.com. So there are four, um, scenarios and these are basically four packages of investments. The first one we're calling, um, scenario A, which is basically current land use. This is everything that is currently planned with your local general plans and agency plans moving forward. Uh, scenario B looks at the current trend plus accessory dwelling units and lots, but like activity. I think many of you have heard about, um, SB nine, which allows for the splitting of lots within a residential or single residential family home to make it two units. So that sort of, um, trend will allow us to increase infill in existing residential neighborhoods. And again, that's all driven by local decisions at the local level. Now scenario, uh, C is, is scenario A with enhanced electromobility, broadband expansion, and more investment in active transportation. And I will say, we're hearing right now with current gas prices and just in trends, you know, the increase in electromobility, electromobility, electric vehicle use is increasing. And we're also seeing additional grant funding coming out for broadband expansion, which means more people can work from home, work from home efficiently. And that also helps us again with the number of folks that are on the road. And then finally, scenario D is basically that residential infill that we talked about in scenario B. Again, with the enhanced electromobility, broadband and active transportation. Active transportation is basically the folks that are biking or walking in communities as opposed to taking, um, either public transportation or a single vehicle. Next slide, please. So all of these options are run through basically different types of scenario, uh, measurement tools to find out, one, if they're feasible. So we look at the financially constrained things. Tier one projects are those projects that we know are fundable within that twenty-five year horizon. And if you look at the little pie chart on the right, you can see the investments that are made from each of the agencies. So for example, we know the state of California will have about thirty-seven percent of that being paid for, um, carts around twenty-one percent. And then each of the individual jurisdictions contribute what they can based on their general funds and the funds that are available for these investments. Next slide, please. And then we test these to take a look and see how well they do with various, um, uh, reductions of greenhouse gas emissions, um, reduction of vehicle miles traveled and a series of other measurement tools. Our workshops, which are going to be held tonight, tomorrow night, and virtually on Thursday, are going to review that information and give the public an opportunity to see which of these scenarios they think best suit their vision for the future of Kings County and which one should be included as the final or preferred alternative that would then move forward for adoption later this fall. If you go to the next slide for me. So we have these three workshops and as Terry mentioned, today's a very busy day. We're going to be presenting at the city of Hanford at a four o'clock special study session. We'll be in Lemoore at their regular council meeting at seven. And then we'll also be in Avonel tonight from six thirty to eight at the Avonel Theater for an in-person workshop. And it's kind of exciting for us because these are the first in-person workshops we've been able to do in the past two years. But we do anticipate having plenty of space so that people can, um, safely move about. We'll have a second workshop tomorrow night. That's Wednesday, the twentieth, and that will be in Hanford at the administrative offices training room. And then our virtual workshop will be on Thursday, also from six thirty to eight. And so if you missed the first two or just wanted to watch it again, you could participate online at that point. Uh, following all these workshops and the input that we received from the public and from our elected officials, we'll then move forward to presentations at the Kings, uh, County Association of Governments Board, which many of you are already sitting on. And then we'll move forward to adopt the preferred plan and then hopefully have adoption later this fall. If you go to the next and I think the final slide, um, again, my name is Kendall Flint. I'm with DKS Associates. This is my third RTPSDS with Terry and the good people of Kings County. So it's been a real pleasure to work with you. Um, and either Terry or I are both available to answer any questions that you might have about the process or the program. Um, and our information is up there. So you can send us an email, give us a call. But we're happy to take any questions that the board might have at this time. And Josie, I think that means at this point you can stop sharing your screen.
Very good. Thank you, uh, Kendall and, uh, Terry. Thanks for being here. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I just want to say, you know, it's important for the community to be involved in this. You know, the, the state of California put these rules out for us to follow with the bicycles and the vehicle miles traveled and reduce carbon emissions and all that stuff. This conformed into our area. So we need your, we need the community's input to help us decide. So if anybody wants to participate, this is the time to do it. Uh, if you don't participate now, you can't complain later on. So with all the new rules coming down from the state of California, it's good to have our own input from our own region. So it's difficult for myself to sit on these boards. I know, Joe, you listen in quite a bit. Uh, what the state wants us to do and the guidelines they want us to follow is difficult. So this is a time that the community can support us and give us suggestions on our part. I mean, we, we don't live in a community where we get on a bike and ride to work and work all day and ride at home or take our train. So we just try to conform it to fit our area. So very important.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions, comments for Terry?
I just want to thank, uh, Ms. King for, uh, taking the time to go to the communities, present that. I saw you last week, the presentation last week at Corcoran City Council. So thanks, uh, for taking that time. That's important. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I sit on these meetings and I call Terry like, what the hell did he just say? So we, I struggle, but I still participate. So I think it's important to get everybody's input.
Very good. Um, any members of the public have any questions or comments?
Did you do Lee Moore already?
What's that?
Did you go to Lee Moore City Council already?
Tonight.
Tonight?
Yeah.
And for tonight and Lee Moore tonight?
And Avonel workshop, yes.
Oh.
How do we do that? Lemoore's going to have to be virtual. We're on at four o'clock on Hanford. So we can do that one, get down to Avonel. And then in Avonel, do virtual for Lemoore. So it's only, I wasn't able to attend in person. I would like to just follow up with a couple of items. Uh, we did work with, uh, county staff, public works and community development. And, uh, some of the projects we have identified, particularly just want to mention in the federal transportation improvement program that help us reduce emissions. We have over a million dollars for, to install a traffic signal at Seventeenth and Houston Avenue. That's at the entrance to Lemoore. That's, I used to drive that and I don't drive that anymore, particularly during school because it's a long line of cars in both directions. So that'll be, um, good to have. Uh, we also have over a million dollars for the roundabout in Kellman City and the Dana Circle connection. And there's additional funds on that one. And then we also have half a million dollars for seals to, um, seal unpaved roads to reduce emissions from particulate matter. And then of course, uh, bicycle and pedestrian projects that are planned and programmed are actually already implemented within the various communities such as, uh, Home Garden, Kellman City and, um, potentially Stratford, I believe. So with that, uh, again, the documents have been released for review and comment. Uh, you can download those from our website, kingscog.org. It's all on the front page with all the links. And then, uh, attending the workshops either in person or virtually. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
I had one quick question. You just mentioned, um, with respect to sealing unpaved roads. Now is that, uh, from a jurisdictional basis or is that, can it be private?
Uh, I believe it has to be public roads. So the county has a list of roadways that are in the worst condition that it's too expensive to repave. They're in the outlying areas, but they will do a low cost protective seal, like an armor coat. You'll have to ask Dominic. He's the expert.
I can tell you, there's one and it's right near Seventeenth and Houston, that, that intersection, Houston Road, which is a, uh, dead end, uh, road. It's gravel right now. And when you exit off there and head back along the freeway, it's a dust cloud. So one to put on your list.
We can add it to the list. Very good. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Again, Terry, good luck, uh, with all the in-person and virtual meetings and, uh, hopefully, uh, everything's productive.
To put it on them.
We can do it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. That concludes all of the, uh, items on today's agenda. We'll now move to board member announcements for reports on their own activities. Each board member will make, uh, brief announcement on their own, uh, activities. Supervisor Peterson, you want to kick off the discussion today?
Um, yeah, I'll be, uh, heading to the National Association of Counties annual meeting in, uh, Denver tomorrow, uh, for four days. This is the policy development meeting for the National Association of Counties. And, um, I chair the, the, um, agricultural, agriculture and rural affairs committee. Um, we have a number of resolutions, but the two big ones again are, um, the WOTUS, um, legislation and also, uh, thirty by thirty, which is, uh, was introduced by, um, the Biden administration to conserve acreage. Um, after a lot of, uh, research and, uh, a recent report by University of Nebraska, you know, uh, thirty, uh, thirty percent of the U.S. acres, um, being conserved would be roughly, uh, I think it was on the order of six hundred and eighty-one million acres. Um, through that research, they found that there's actually, uh, over eight hundred, uh, uh, eight hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, eight hundred million, six hundred and eighty-one million, eight hundred million acres that, that are already in that. And, uh, so there's a lot of folks concerned that, that, um, uh, the administration is trying to, uh, further um, restrict public access to public lands. And, and, uh, so those two will be hot topics there as well as, um, obviously homelessness and, and all the other things that counties deal with, uh, on a national basis.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Raboon?
Uh, this last Friday I had a CalCog, uh, uh, meeting, which is, uh, California Councils of Governments. And we discussed, uh, the increase in our dues and our staff, uh, salaries. So, uh, I think we increased to sixty-five hundred or sixty-six, sixty-five fifty, something like that. And we still belong. It was a short meeting, no big deal. And then on, uh, I forget what day, Friday, Thursday, Supervisor Valley and myself too are people cannabis. I lost them in the haze. Very much. He was kind of wandering around out there, but, uh, no, Supervisor Valley was very nervous being around cannabis. Uh, he thought that if you touched it, you would get high, but, uh, they were, they just finished their harvest the night before. They silaged it all off, put it in a, uh, walking floor, take it up to, I believe, San Joaquin?
Correct.
And the process of, the process of, and it's all for the fibers. And they crush it, take the oils out, take the fibers, use that for something else. Uh, that was the first crop. It was a short crop, probably about twenty-four inches tall. And then they're planting today, they're planting the new crop, transplanting it. They were working on the transplanter. Uh, the irrigation is all state of the art, uh, technology, all state of the art. It's safe, uh, from the outside people getting into it. It's all, it has fences all the way around it. It has, uh, lights all the way around it. When the plants grow at night, they turn the big lights off, put a green light on it so that it, it still grows at night. Uh, they have their own security out there watching people. And, uh, the smell was a problem last year at a certain time, but this harvest, no one complained. Uh, so they're kind of fine tuning their, what they're doing. They went out there with a combine. They have free combine. They tried a combine and that didn't work. So I think they're figuring out what works in our area and I think it's good for the community. I mean, it's, it's not a good product to be out there, I believe, for some people, uh, but it has its place. And I think the people's, uh, company did a good job making it fit in our area. So. Supervisor Valley?
Uh, yes, uh.
Did you get your gift pack?
No.
Your coupon?
I didn't, I didn't, they didn't offer anything. I didn't accept anything.
You remember.
I showed up, uh, did the tour and, uh,
I left your car was still sitting there.
I left before you. Yeah, no, the, uh,
You guys really go to the same place?
We, we did. We did. Um, he told me.
Hey, I was really hungry when I got down.
The day before he said, um, I'm going to wear shorts. And so I showed up just in shorts and a T-shirt. He showed up dressed up and left me, left me out there. But, uh, but, uh, yeah, it was very educational. Um, I did enjoy the tour, like Super Boon said. Uh, I was impressed with the, uh, amount of security. Um, there wasn't anything growing at the time. They just picked, but there was, um, uh, there, there wasn't a strong odor at that time with the, there's a lot of remnants still out there. Um, and, um, but it was, uh, it was educational and, and learning what they do and, uh, what they do to, uh, to, uh, try to get this out there, to sell it and, and the different, uh, products. Uh, and so, uh, very interesting. I appreciate that. I also, as I mentioned, attended Corcoran City Council meeting last Tuesday. There was supposed to be a lot of people there, um, who'd been vocal on social media regarding the homelessness issue in Corcoran and a large encampment there at, uh, John Maruit Park in downtown Corcoran, which, um, you know, causes some issues to, uh, property owners whose backyards are butted up right at that park and just some of the, um, the negative things that are taking place, while at the same time being compassionate, uh, to the homeless situation. But, um, you know, it's something that, um, I'm glad the city council is taking time to work on, Corcoran Police Department. Uh, because the bigger issue is, um, right now, as, as we know, as you enter Corcoran on the north side, it's a very beautiful park being built right now. Uh, I think a seven million dollar grant plus a million dollars, uh, investment in the, uh, Veterans Memorial that's being built. And, um, you know, the good, the question that the community has is if you can't stop, um, the homeless from taking over this current park in downtown Corcoran, then what are the guarantees that they don't move to this new park? Which, you know, um, I really, I really hope that area stays, um, uh, welcoming for people because that, again, that, that Veterans Memorial has the opportunity to be an attraction, to draw people state to the city of Corcoran, the county of Kings, and has the ability to be a revenue, uh, a stream for the city of Corcoran as well. Um, and those businesses in Corcoran and, uh, I, I still don't think people are going to come if it gets to be a negative, um, uh, rumor or information going around of, of what's going on there at that park, like, like is going on at John Maruit Park in, in Corcoran and, um, sprinkler, anything from sprinklers getting damaged to our veterans, uh, hall there getting, um, uh, graffitied or windows broken and, um, and damage to the property owners who, who live there. So, um, it's an issue and, um, it was worth the time. And I hope we can get to a better place with that for the homeless and, uh, for the community of Corcoran and for that new park. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Uh, for me, the CalVans had a meeting on July fourteenth. Uh, the financials were reviewed. Uh, currently there's seven hundred and twenty-seven, uh, total active vans in the state of California. Six hundred and sixteen of them are in the ag, ag industry, uh, support side of the house with a hundred and eleven in the non-ag operations. Uh, there's approximately, well, there's thirty-six ag vans operating in Kings County with forty general, uh, van pools. So, uh, uh, seventy-six or so of that, uh, seven hundred and twenty-seven are right here in Kings County. The, uh, Lemoore Little League had their section seven playoff games that were held in Lemoore Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Uh, nice, cool nights, especially everybody's, uh, uh, kind of gets elevated even for a baseball game, uh, when it's a hundred and ten. Uh, so, but we made it through that, Porterville, uh, and Madera had that three-game playoff series with, uh, Porterville earning the, uh, banner, uh, in two thousand and twenty-two. Also attended the, uh, Layton Beans and Linguisa dinner. That was a drive-through event, um, because they had to get back to the ballpark. And then yesterday we had the Kings County Homeless Meeting. Uh, the point in time data is now available on the Kings-Tolary Homeless Alliance.org page. Uh, it is a fifty-six page document that addresses homelessness in both counties, uh, Kings and Tolary, and a lot of detail to it. So if you need to go down through that, uh, there is a discussion, uh, that will be on the agenda for next month at the, uh, Kings County Homeless Committee meeting about, um, safe harbors. Uh, so it will be, uh, a discussion on setting up areas for homeless people to be able to camp overnight. Um, so that is a discussion that will be coming up, uh, just to put on your radar screens, uh, to be able to figure out, uh, how to, how to deal with some of this uncontrolled, um, camping, I guess, for the lack of a better term, um, of the homeless population. But all of that information is available online, uh, through the, uh, Kings-Tolary Homeless Alliance.org. Uh, with that, Mr. Hill, you want to talk about board correspondence, upcoming events and information on future agenda items?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For board correspondence, your board received correspondence dated July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two from Eldorado Irrigation District to the State Water Resources Control Board of Water Rights regarding a petition for change involving water transfer under License twenty-one eighty-four. Your board received correspondence on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two from Habitat for Humanity of Kings County and Tolary. County and Tullary Counties regarding tax-deductible contributions. For upcoming events, the City of Hanford is hosting Movies in the Park on July 29. Admission is free. Disney's The Jungle Cruise will be shown, and the movie begins at dusk at Civic Park. The City of Hanford is also hosting a dive-in theater at the Hanford Plunge on July 22 at 7:30 PM. The movie will be The Addams Family 2. The movie begins at dusk, and the cost is $3 per person.
Looks like a day in home.
That's right.
Swimming with Addams Family.
The Hanford Multicultural Theater Company is hosting a one-week summer workshop for improv and acting classes for kids ages 11 to 15. The workshop is from July 25 to 29, from 9:00 AM to noon at 14060 Hackett Street in Hanford. Kings Arts Center will be hosting an evening of the arts on Friday, August 5, 2022, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at 605 North Doughty Street in Hanford. There will be a public safety appreciation luncheon hosted by the Greater Kings, excuse me, County Chamber of Commerce and Hanford Chamber of Commerce on August 10 at the Hanford Civic Auditorium located at 400 North Doughty Street, Hanford. The event will take place at 12:00 PM, and tickets are $20 each. Tickets can be purchased on Eventbrite or through the website at thehanfordchamber.com. The Hanford Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a biz ball, picket ball tournament on Saturday, August 27 at 7:00 PM at the Hanford Pickleball Courts located at 1010 West Grangeville Boulevard. Registration is $6, excuse me, $60 per team, and one of the players must be employed by a local business. For upcoming agenda items, administration has one item for consideration regarding appointments to Bureau Health Advisory Board. Child Support Services has one item for consideration to adopt a resolution proclaiming August 2022 as Child Support Awareness Month. Community Development Agency has one item for consideration regarding the monthly reporting of planning commission's actions. Health has one item, consideration to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of August as National Breastfeeding Month. Human Resources has two items, request for authorization to have a side letter agreement with the Probation Officers Association for Longevity Pay, and consideration to adopt a salary resolution and longevity pay for identified safety management classification. Job Training Office has one item for consideration regarding approval of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Master Subgrant Agreement for fiscal year 2223. And Sheriff has two items, consideration regarding an airplane engine overhaul purchase and consideration regarding a bomb suit and helmet purchase. That concludes our report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Any questions or comments for Mr. Hill? I hear there's seen none. That concludes the actions of today. Just a reminder, stay cool. I want to appreciate the grand jury for being here, the newly seated grand jury, 2022 to 2023. The board will now move into closed session to take up one item regarding Southern California Edison Company versus California State Board of Equalization, and any reporting out will occur next Tuesday, which is our next regular scheduled meeting, July 26, 2022. With that, everyone, stay healthy and safe and cool, and we'll see you next week. Thank you very much.